Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. We will terminate or adjourn the closed-door session. I want to thank you all for your patience. We ran a little over in the closed door. We're now going to call the City Commission meeting of April 21st to order at 6:50. And we'll begin tonight's meeting. I'm going to ask if I could get our police chaplain, Mr. Woodrow Hay, would give us an invocation. Appreciate it. Followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please rise.
Let us praise most graces in heaven. Father, we thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for the opportunity of gathering to do the business of this great church. Bless now all of these commissioners and staff. We're grateful for the citizens who have turned out. Father, we pray that you would be in the midst of all decisions that are made that will be for the betterment of this great city, Boynton Beach, and its citizens. We pray, Father, that you would continue to allow us to look forward to more projects and increase population and businesses in our great city. Happy to be the city that you would have it to be. And we'll be so careful to give you all the honor and all the praise. In your Savior's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Jerry Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joe Casella.
Here.
Commissioner David Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitaker Patterson.
Here.
Commissioner McCray is absent.
He's absent. He'll be out for the whole day. Just one little housekeeping item. If you're sitting towards the frontier, you want to be careful if you're going to be speaking to the person next to you or something. There's a microphone right there at the clerks' table that picks up everything in the frontier. And we can't edit that. It goes right out to the web. So just be careful with your conversations up in the front first few rows. And I think our City Manager, Carissa June, would like to make a comment to the staff.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for finding their way to the library program room. We apologize for the immediate change in venue due to all the rain. We had some circumstances that we couldn't control in the City Commission meeting. And I just wanted to send out a huge thank you to city staff that helped us do the relocation so quickly. Everybody pitched in and did a great job so that we're now set up here to do the meeting. So I just want to thank the staff who helped us get together here in the library program room.
Thank you. For agenda approval or any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I have an item, please.
Okay.
Under legal other to add or request for a private attorney-client session in the lawsuit, Lloyd D. Minas versus the City of Boynton. And my request would be that we do that in conjunction with the next commission meeting, either before or after. Need about 30 minutes.
Okay, we'll take that up when we get there. Is there a motion approved, the agenda has been?
I'd just like to pull consent six i, just for information.
Okay. Anybody else want to pull anything off consent? Hearing none, is there a motion approved, the agenda has?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to informational items by Mayor and City Commission. Commissioner Merker?
I pass.
Vice Mayor Casella?
I'd like to report for Mr. Mayor, but I'd just like to have put on a future agenda to establish at America Gas down there on Federal. I know it's no longer in business. I've asked the chief to inspect it. It's been in compliance as far as fire regulations. But I'd like to know what the process would be to getting those tanks removed now that no longer going to be in use.
Okay. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I just have one informational item. I went to the county commission meeting today, and the county commissioner approved the sale of Lake Ida to Delray Beach for $100,000. I'd just like to say, though, there was a lot of irritation in the city of Boynton Beach for rejecting their offer after we went to them and said we wanted to do it. So this was bleeding over into their consideration of Delray's bid. So I met it head-on by throwing the majority of the Boynton Beach City Commission under the bus. I said that they were three old men with 1950 mindset, and that's the reason it was rejected. And the next person in line behind me then riffed on it and called you grumpy old men. So I'm afraid that might be in the paper tomorrow. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for future agenda, I'd also like to have a discussion on some of the Lincoln Water Bills, one being the crossings for $142,000. And the other one is Yasmin Plaza. Am I saying that right? Which we made some agreements with both these establishments to pay off these water bills, and they reneged on it. I'd like to talk about that for the future agenda.
Okay, but I think they're, they each are getting 45 days to respond. We've sent them letters, and they're going to give them 45 days to correct it if they want to. But whatever, we can bring it up. For myself, I just, I attended an INCA picnic. The INCA had their picnic Sunday, I believe it was, and I think Commissioner Merker was there, Commissioner McCray, Buck Buchanan was there. It was a very nice event. I happen to be a food judge, so whenever you're judging food, you just can't please everybody. Somebody's got to. But everything was so good, I didn't know who to let go. I wanted to bring up again, I brought it on some before, but because this is April 21st, on the 24th, a Children Disaster Services Volunteer Workshop will be held at the First United Methodist Church across from City Hall. Starts on Friday, the 24th. And if you want to be involved in that, they're going to train you how to deal with children who have been, go through disaster, a disaster. So if you'd something that would interest you, that's April 24th at the, in the First United Baptist Church. The other thing I want to just mention was, and I think all the commissioners got this, but our, our Committee on Mental Health has been doing a great job. They've had, they've created their objectives, and they've been moving forward on them. They've gotten the high school students involved in this really good. The school, we had a contest in the school, the children came up with a logo. We recognized the winner of that. They have cultivated some relationships and some stuff, getting those kids involved in this committee, and there's a lot. I don't want to read all this to you, I just want you to know that the committee is really working very strong on this, and I think it's really important because mental health is something that affects all of us. And this committee is doing a great job, and so we do have some background. And if you want to know what they're doing, I'm sure they'd be glad to. Woodrow Hay is the chair of that committee, and if you need some information on where they're going, just contact him, and he'll get you all the stuff and bring you up to date on what they're doing. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to say, make a comment on the Lake Ida Park. Mayor Taylor, Commissioner McCray, and myself, as stated, were called grumpy old men or whatever we were called. Well, the three grumpy old men, looks like they got their way. We didn't have to lay out money. We don't have to pay for the maintenance of a park. This way, the money that would be used and would be purchased will go for our own parks. So I look at it that we hit a home run. And what is good for Delray Beach, I wish them well. What's good for Boynton Beach is more important. So the, the item of spending money I always find in interesting among politicians, if it's for certain groups or certain thoughts or certain wants, it's a wonderful thing. But when it's not what they want, all of a sudden, we're grumpy old men or any other adjective or adverb that can be used. So in summation, I look at this as a victory for Boynton Beach. There's the park. And we did not have to lay out a dime.
I would just mention that, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I feel you made some unprofessional comments about your fellow commissioners at both the City of Delray Commission meeting and at the, at the County Commission. And I just think that's unprofessional to comment on your fellow commissioners like that in a derogatory manner. I know this was very close to you, but, you know, I don't, it doesn't bother me, it's gone in the past. The old, you know, learn as a kid, sticks and stones will break your bones, but names will never hurt you. So I'm leaving, it's gone, as far as I'm concerned, it's gone in the past. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll go, I have a proclamation for April 2015 as Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month. Is there someone here to receive that proclamation?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to read it right from here, and we'll get it to the right people. Whereas residing within the boundaries of Boynton Beach, many of our neighbors have served as members of the armed forces, and in doing so honored our community with exemplary dedication. And whereas it's important that we recognize the sacrifices made by our community's veterans who are paralyzed, now therefore I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, hereby proclaim the month of April as Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month in the City of Boynton Beach. I encourage the citizens of Boynton Beach to honor our paralyzed veterans because they've personified the highest ideals of service to country, sacrifice of self, and perseverance in overcoming adversity. Their stories of hardship and triumph provide life-affirming lessons for all of us. I also encourage the people of the City of Boynton Beach to observe and participate in the activities associated with Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month, and reflect upon the sacrifices endured by our community's veterans who are paralyzed. There are many local community service organizations, particularly those serving our youth, that seek involvement in worthy projects, and Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month meets and surpasses that standard. It witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and call the seal of the City of Boynton Beach to be fixed this 21st day of April, 2015. If you pass it down, we'll get that to the right parties. Thank you. Next, I want to announce Earth Week 2015 activities for the City of Boynton Beach. And I'm going to turn this again over to Carissa June, our Assistant City Manager, who is very involved in our Earth Day activities.
So as Mayor said, this is Earth Week. Tomorrow is Earth Day, and we're going to have an Arbor Day tree planting at 9:00 a.m. at the Boynton Lakes Park. It's also not too late to take the challenge for water conservation. You can go to www.mywaterpledge.com and take a four-step conservation pledge. It's really easy, I've done it myself. And residents in winning cities are eligible to win hundreds of prizes. And also, Thursday evening at 6:00 p.m., the Boynton Beach Utilities Department is hosting a water conservation workshop. We'll have the water management districts represented, but we're also going to have do-it-yourself presentations by Lowe's and University of Florida for drought resilient landscaping and low-flow plumbing. I encourage everyone to attend. I think it's going to be a great workshop. And we'll have micro refreshments, and gift bags are available. First come, first served. Probably the first 50 people will be able to get a gift bag. So join us to celebrate Earth Week and help us to conserve water for the city. And there's more information on that back table if you want to pick up a flyer to take with you, and please share with your friends, neighbors, and family. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to public audience. Anybody who wishes to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you give your name and address for the record. Now, although there's not a clock up there, the city attorney does have a three-minute timepiece that he'll be timing you.
I'll be prompt. My name's Harry Woodward. I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place in Boynton Beach. I'm the president of INCA. First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners, the Arbor people, the police people, everybody that came over to the picnic Sunday, the judges, I don't envy you guys. Although I wonder about that runoff that we kept having to go back to. Anyhow, I just want a couple things. I don't have an update on the polls on Federal Highway. Our friends at FPN were a little busy this week, so they didn't give me the update in time. But there's about six empty ones that should come out any time, and there's maybe a 10 or 11 left after that. That's all AT&amp;T, so when you get those U-verse things, why don't you just hold on to them until you see them take their polls down? But that's the only thing I'd like to ask the commission is, Lori's coming back, I guess, in a few weeks, is maybe we could take a look at doing something on Federal Highway. The polls are almost gone. When you transition coming south out of Hypoluxo, it is just embarrassing what happens when you transition into Boynton Beach, and that reflects on all of us. I mean, it's just not a lot to fix some of those plants and clean the litter out of that median strip and stuff. I mean, that's just, that's just really embarrassing, and the transition is like day and night if you're driving south on that. A lot of people now are, because Gateway's so congested, they're going up to Hypoluxo. If you got northbound, you go to Hypoluxo. So you're going through that transition, and it's just heartbreaking to see that. So maybe when she gets back, you guys could take a look at that and see what we can do about it. Thank you.
You talking the west side?
Yeah, it's just generally, there's just no maintenance there. Nobody's picking up the litter. The guys that do show up and do a little bit of work in the median, throw the stuff out in the road. And what, the downside, I'm finding out about having the sidewalks fixed, is people are using them now, and now they're calling me and complaining about the mess. It's like, it's better off to be distracted by the ugly poles and the broken sidewalks. And now people are walking, riding, jogging, and it's like, my God, this looks like Ellen, and we should, we should fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Whiteley, 5503. Can I pick this up?
Sure.
5503, Washington Starling, Green Acres, Florida. I'm just here to tell the commission thank you for their help with the MLK candlelight visual became, and we asked for your participation, and, and the commission came out in full force. Not all of the commission, but Chief Katz, my very good friend here, she came out, the assistant, the interim city manager, the assistant city manager. And I would like to also give a special thank you to someone that's here. I'm not going to mention this person's name, but we ran a little short with some, with some funds, and this person wrote a personal check. So they didn't have to, but they did, so I just want to tell them thank you. And it's just disrespectful not to get help and not to come back and say thank you. So thank you. We had an attendance topping maybe between 250 and 300 at the, at the max. People kept coming and outgoing, so it was a great, it was a great start for something that we plan to do every year. So once again, thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission at this time?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Hallahan. I work with Glenda Hall in the Engineering Department under the direction of Jeff Littlegood. I'd like to introduce you tonight in concert with Carissa's Earth Week ceremonies and activities, and tomorrow will be Arbor Day. We have two representatives here tonight from the Landscape Inspectors Association of Florida. Glenda recently and I joined the group, and I'd like for them in the three minutes or less to explain some of the benefits the taxpayers receive from our membership fees to help with some of those thoughts, and the benefits that you as administrators receive, us as staff, and the residents of Boynton Beach. This is Ted December from the Landscape Inspectors Association of Florida. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Ted Kozak, and representing Landscape Inspectors Association of Florida, the zoning administrator for the City of Green Acres tonight. Just dovetailing what you've been talking about, or at least the Earth Day coming up. First, who we are. The Landscape Inspectors Association is a collaboration of landscape professionals who is mission to train, certify, and provide peer leadership in the, for landscape professionals promoting best management practices within the Florida's green industry. We are over three decades, three decades old, and we've been setting standards for professional members in providing education for the public in the industry. Our professionals are responsible for landscape inspections, landscape ordinance development and management, as well as landscape and site plan review, ensuring property tree care and compliance with Florida Department of Plant Industries grades and standards. We provide educational opportunities for homeowners, property owners, arborists, tree trimmers, nursery professionals, and landscape contractors on proper installation techniques. What we do and do best is provide certification and encourage the City of Boynton Beach to, hopefully in the future, encourage certification of all those performing landscape inspections to be certified by our organization. And also, the second part I'd like to talk about here is what is, is going to be encouraged. It sounds like the City of Boynton Beach, water-wise and native plants, a part of any sustainable built environment, it's critical to reduce consumption of water. And precious resources are important to be watchful of. As we've heard from California, there's a lot of drought conditions out there, and we encourage the elimination or at least a large-scale reduction of watering in the landscape. Native landscape basically is plants that do not require a lot or even any supplemental landscape in irrigation, and choosing drought-tolerant plants basically helps in the environment. So again, the LIF would like to partner with the City of Boynton and provide educational opportunities, selection of appropriate and quality native plants which reduce consumption of water. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is December Lauritano-Haines, and I'm with the Landscape Inspectors Association. And just to add something to what my colleague and counterpart said, we are board members of the Landscape Inspectors Association, and I'd just like to congratulate the City of Boynton Beach on, and the staff of the city for the selections that have been made here already. As an outsider coming from a totally different county and someone who's kind of, I'm a Parks and Recreation Coordinator in Southwest Ranches, Florida, way down south, and I'm also the town arborist. I think what you're doing here is fantastic. It's very obvious that the people in this city care about water-wise, Florida-friendly, and the best management practice principles. And I just, I want to say congratulations because you're doing a great job, and thank you for listening to us this evening. All the best.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, my name's Robert Pollock, and I live 210 Northeast 27 Avenue, Boynton Beach, Mike McCray's area. I went by the heart of Boynton, and I seen the bulldozer, they're looking good, going in the right direction. And like I said, I'm going to keep my eye, especially on your old grumpy old men's up there. I can say that because I'm grumpy too, okay? But you're doing a good job, and I want to thank you. And I'm going to keep on coming to these meetings and make sure that y'all don't let me down there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your interest. Anyone else wish to address commission items not on the agenda? Yes, the podium, go, you name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mary McCarthy, 2016 South Federal Highway, Boynton Beach. I spoke at the last meeting regarding the red light tickets. Now, I understand you had a closed-door session, and you're going to address that somewhere during this meeting.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Will there be a place for the public to speak after that's made, if necessary?
Yes, I'll give you an opportunity to speak when we talk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else need to address commission items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public audience and go to administrative. We have three appointments tonight. First one, we have an application for the Arts Commission, and it's Lisa Hyman and the, see Fitzpatrick, you have an alternate appointment if you'd like to make it?
I would nominate Simon.
Is there a second? A motion second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and Christina Romulus. Commissioner Merker, you have alternate appointment to that board? You want to make it?
Yes, I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Library Board is Diette Matthews. And Commissioner Merker, you have a regular appointment if you'd like to make it?
I'd like to table it, please.
Okay. I think we have to wait a couple of meetings for the next person to make the appointment, right?
You have an alternate appointment?
I do. Can I make that?
Yes, you can.
All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and appoint them to alternate position, and then Commissioner Merker, if he's still there for the record next meeting, can move him up to regular if he wants to. If, I don't know if it's a him or Diette. D-E-T-T-E? I'm not sure either. Are they here? No? Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint them as an alternate to the Library Board.
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Okay, that takes us to, the one item removed from the consent agenda was item I, Vice Mayor. It's adopt the city's local housing assistance plan, which has been updated by our state fiscal year 2015, 16, 2016, 17, 2018. Plan approval is for the continuation of the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for my own information here, we've suspended that program as of today, correct?
No, we haven't, sir. Oh, Octavia Schirrock, Community Development Manager.
And Nancy Burness, Development Director, sorry. We have not, the city's affordable housing plan has been suspended. Our ordinance, our personal ordinance, the, the local housing assistance plan is the State Housing Initiative Program Plan, totally separate issues.
So the city's affordable housing ordinance has been suspended?
That's correct.
Okay, yes, that was my question.
That's correct.
Secondly, with the economic boom that we're having now, we plan on putting that back into effect come September?
That is something that staff will bring forward to commission for discussion. We do an analysis on it every year, and I can, I can almost guarantee you that our proposal will be that we reinstate it in September because of the way that rate, that rental rates are increasing and housing prices are climbing.
What does that, what effect does that have on a builder? I read somewhere, I think it was the Palm Beach Post, where a builder can walk out of that program by paying a fee of, it was $80,000, $85,000?
That is the county's policy for affordable housing. The city's policy so far has not had a buyout, but we will probably bring you back that type of proposal. Whether or not it will match the county's buyout number or not, that's up for analysis yet, and it's a little premature to discuss that.
Would that be per unit or for the whole project?
No, it would be per unit.
Per unit?
Right.
So it could be quite expensive for a builder to occupy it.
Well, our preference is that they build the affordable housing into the project.
They're not, they're not bound by law to do that, though, are they?
Local ordinance would require them, and it has in the past, to provide affordable housing units within the project.
How does that affect a developer coming into our city that knows he has to either put affordable housing in or has to pay that $80,000 per unit? How does that affect the construction?
Difficult to say. It depends on the market. If it's, if it's one of those deals where rentals and property values are as high as they are now, the developer may choose to pay out, and then it's on the city, our obligation then to provide that affordable housing somewhere else in the city, which is why that buyout clause is in there. Otherwise, it's normally mandatory, and they don't have the option to not provide the affordable housing because workforce housing needs a place to live. You can't push out all of the service workers, the, the blue and the white collar workers that provide services to the city because you're not providing them an affordable place to live.
So how would the city go about putting affordable housing out there to help these people? What would be our role in that? How do we go about doing that?
Well, we're doing it partially now with Model Block. That's one of the programs that the city's doing where we're building affordable housing.
May I?
Would it be, would it be subject just to the CRA district, or would this have to go through the citywide?
No, it would be citywide. We could do it anywhere, and developers would be subject to it no matter where they build. It would not be within the confines of the CRA or the CDBD district. It would be a citywide ordinance.
Okay, so come September, we're going to be having this discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Merker?
Yeah, I'd like a question or statement. An item like this, which is affecting people's lives where they live and where they don't live, is this something where either one of you or we can sit down and talk? And I'll use a word, I don't know if it's an appropriate word, negotiate? The idea that someone wants to invest and not to invest and then to invest, is there room for negotiations on this with these people?
Absolutely. We'll be sitting down in June, I believe, on the strategic plan, and this will be first and foremost on development's list of items that we need to cover with the commission because it is coming back to you. So we will be discussing it during strategic planning, and then we can either workshop it, we can do it at the City Commission meeting, we can do it individually, however you'd like. The item in front of you tonight is not about the city's affordable housing program, and I just want to be clear.
No, that's not what I'm questioning.
Right. It's about the state housing money.
No, what I'm questioning is representing the people. Since we're elected by the people, we should represent those people who are unfortunate in a in a position. So, what I'm saying is when someone who has grandiose ideas of building, all of a sudden changes his mind in a direction, I think it'd be a plus, either you or one of us, to sit down and saying, "Hey, let's talk."
I totally agree.
Thank you.
And we will.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-15-03?
So moved.
Second.
The motion's second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Approve and negotiate, this is code combines legal settlements, approve negotiated settlement of $39,000 in case of William Patterson versus City Boynton Beach. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. This takes the public hearing, first public hearing to approve the land development agreement between, is there a motion removed, item 9A from the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Approve land development agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and SKYE at Boynton Beach LLC that involves defining the developer's maintenance obligations and process for credits to certain impact fees. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Mayor, excuse me, you need to inquire whether there's any members of the public that wish to speak to this item. This is the first of two public hearings on this item.
Okay, I thought we always did on the second one, but, does anybody wish to address this item? Seeing none?
Just a mayor?
Yes.
Just a point of information myself, do we have a timeline, like we just might actually stock this project? Do we have any?
Anybody here from sky?
Just speculation.
Please ask them.
My name is Tom Hayden. I am with La Sasey Development, 650 South North Lake in Altamont Springs, Florida. And we are right now targeting for a starting date of mid-May. So, it's coming together rapidly. There's a lot of documents being sent back and forth between the parties, the lenders and us. So, hopefully by mid-May, we'll start, you'll see some equipment on site.
For those who want to know what we're talking about, that's the cross from Hurricane Alley, the two area, two-block area, we're talking mid-May, hopefully breaking ground, the equipment on site there. So, that's what we're talking about, mid-May. We might see something happening there, that's great. Looking forward to that. Under new business, proposed Resolution R-15-042 authorize the city to enter into a rate-lock agreement with Bank of America NA with respect to proposed public service tax revenue refunding bond series 2015. City Attorney, do you need to read anything on this?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just, just, you might want to tell people what this, what this is actually, how this is saving the city of Boynton Beach some money.
Good. Mayor, Commissioners, Tim Howard, Director of Finance. You recently did a refinancing as CRA board, and Jay Glover, our financial advisor, went out and issued an RFP for the city's refinancing of our public service tax debt, which is about 24 and a half, 25 million that we have outstanding, that matures in 2026. We received proposals back, the most responsive after being reviewed was Bank of America or their affiliate, which is called Bank of America Preferred Funding Corporation. What's in front of you tonight is to execute a rate-lock agreement, which will lock our rate in. May 5th, the bond documents will come back to you, the refunding documents will come back to you to be passed, and proposed closing is May 15th. All of that said together, as of today, we believe Bank of America is going to lock in a rate of 1.95%. We are currently paying between 4% and 5% on our bonds. The translation is, next fiscal year will reduce our debt service by in excess of $130,000. The next 11 years after that, over $200,000 a year, for a total of in excess of $2.3 million over the next three years as a reduction in debt service payments.
And it doesn't extend up one?
No, the refunding bonds will mature November 2026.
Great, thank you, great work.
And this is written in stone.
For those who cannot have heard that, we'll be saving $2.3 million over the life of this bond. So, that's great, refinancing. Okay, is there a motion on R-15-042?
Yeah, second, second.
That was discussion, okay, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Discuss, under legal, discussion of the city of Boynton Beach red light camera program tabled on 4/7, is there a motion removed from the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. The city attorney, you want to lead us off on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the members of the commission and the public have been following all of the media stories regarding the city's red light camera program. As you probably know, the city of Boynton Beach is one of the last cities standing with respect to the continued enforcement of the program. On April 1st, we did have a hearing in front of a local judge, at which time 200 of our cases had been challenged, and were before the judge at that particular time. The judge conducted a trial on one of those cases specifically. I think the way that this has played out somewhat in the media is that the red light camera program is a money grab by the city, and there's been little said about the public safety issue with respect to that. I wanted to start off my initial comments with that, and to show you the video that the judge saw the day of that April 1st hearing, and say a word about it specifically, don't play it just yet, but what happens at these red light camera intersections is, you're seeing the view of the camera right now that is recording the picture of the violation. If you will note, in this particular picture right now, the video will start in a second, the camera, the red light has already turned red. The car that you're going to see, that was the subject of the trial, is going to be approaching from this area into the intersection. So, as you can see right now, and the judge saw this video as well and acknowledged the violate, the technical violation, you will note that this car is not even at the stop line for that intersection at the time that the camera's already red. So, if you'll play this video, and we're gonna play it twice, you're gonna see this vehicle, keep your eye also on this truck right here. There's the car running the intersection, red light, and the car that knows it. Just, if you could replay that for just a second. And just stop it when it gets to that red line there. Right there. All right, so, as you know, the light was already red before the, this vehicle, this is, this is the individual that the judge dismissed the ticket against, right here. You can see that the light's red, this car is already proceeding into the intersection. Go ahead and play the conclusion of it. And you can see that that potentially could have been a very dangerous and accident that could have easily resulted in injury. Now, that's just one example of the type of videos that were available to the judge to see what he dismissed this case and all of the remaining 199 cases approximately that day. Let's go to one additional video, just to give you an example of.
Did you just notice that the other car stopped that was X amount of seconds after?
Yes.
That, that's a, that's a valid point also.
Okay. So, again, on this particular video, don't get played yet, okay? You can see the red, the light is already red at this particular point, so just watch what occurs here. Go ahead and play that, please. This vehicle right here.
He didn't run the red line.
All right, this is another example of a clear violation. The driver of this vehicle who did receive a ticket had that ticket dismissed as well. Let's show one more. Now, that looks amber, but those are red lights. So, that, you can see how long that light has been red, and how dangerous that intersection was at that particular time. That individual received a red light camera citation, that case was dismissed. Okay, let's show one more. And these are representative cases that we prosecute on behalf of the city.
Is that you, Joe?
It's my wife.
All right, that one's a little bit difficult. Let's go back to the beginning of that one for just a second, if you would. Okay, now, this is a little bit complicated, stop it right there. You may be looking at this, but that's the through line, this is a red light right here for these two turn lanes here. So, not only is one car going through this intersection, you'll see several that do so as well. And I want you to note, over here, there is somebody that has the right to cross now because they're, they have the right of way right here. These cars that are violating this red light that is right here, just watch what happens And these, these cars received red light ticket violation citations, these cases were dismissed. This is right here, the light's red, it has been red, this car enters the intersection. Thank you. These videos represent the types of cases that the city ordinance allows the city to prosecute under the red light camera program. Clearly, I think it's obvious to everybody, the safety issue that's involved here. Nonetheless, on some technicalities with respect to the state statute, who has the authority to issue a ticket? The courts have ruled that the city's program should result in dismissal of these kinds of cases, because the city uses a vendor ATS, American Traffic Systems, to conduct the program for them in some respects. But in reality, our system, which we believe the court did not fully take into consideration, the city has not delegated its responsibility to ATS and maintains it. The judge has not yet issued a written order on the case that where he dismissed the 200, approximately 200 cases. And part of the issue that is before the commission this evening is what to do with that, and how to deal with the appeal if the city wants to take an appeal.
City Attorney, did I take that off the table?
I'm not sure you did or not, here.
I did, did I? Yes, she did, thank you.
So, we have a contract with American Traffic Systems ATS, and our contract contains a provision that I'll pass down to you, I've highlighted just a few provisions of it. And it allows the city, actually allows either the city or ATS to terminate the agreement if we provide written notice to do so. I'll just wait a second, all that comes down to you.
That's all I'm saying.
That's all I'm saying, it's just one page. This is one page of a lengthy contract that we have with ATS. So, the city has the right, and ATS has the right to terminate the agreement, that's what the top part says. The second part that I've highlighted is, if any court having jurisdiction over the city rules or declares that the city's red light enforcement program or the program set forth by state law is invalid, well, we don't actually have a ruling to that effect. We don't even actually have a written ruling from the court yet, all we know is that the court dismissed our tickets for the violations that I've just shown you. I think we're certainly in a position, and the third highlighted provision says, we also have the right to terminate it if a decision by a court makes it impracticable to operate the red light enforcement program. And I believe that, based upon the court's decision so far, they were probably operating on that provision. What we thought was a program we could practically operate and enforce may not be the case. You'll note the last provision I've highlighted, that if we, that we believe we have the right to terminate the contract, ATS has the right to try to cure the defect that we point out to them as the result of the termination. So, my recommendation tonight, based upon the court's decision, and I'm certain the court order when the judge signs the order will be just what he did, he'll have dismissed everything, is to put ATS on notice that we no longer think the contract could be enforced, give them written notice, and provide them with their 45 days to provide a remedy to fix the contract in some respect. There's a number of different ways that they could do that, which I discussed with all of you individually, but it's up to them to make those decisions about what to advise us they can or cannot do. So, tonight, all I'm asking you to do is for authority to write the letter and see how they react to it.
Okay, I just want to comment that, two things. One, when the judge looked at these videos, he said there's no doubt in his mind that the people that ran those red lights broke the law. So, he wasn't disputing the fact that they were definitely guilty of running the red lights. His thing was that he felt like the process the city uses to issue the tickets, we have our police department look at them, review all these videos, if there's any question at all, we don't forward them to ATS. But as you can see there, it's pretty, pretty blatant that these people went through the red lights. In fact, I would tell you, one lady there, when the judge heard the case, had four tickets. She had run the red light four different times, a red light. And when the judge threw them all out, she got up and thanked that attorney for getting her tickets thrown away. And I was sitting there watching that thinking, I hope when she runs a red light and kills somebody, that she can find that attorney again, that she's gonna need them. So, I just say, no matter what happens here tonight, people, running red lights puts people's lives in danger. So, I just ask you, out of the goodness of your heart, please obey the traffic signals.
Stop sign, red light, it's never stopped anybody. I guess nobody here marched this year, but all the publicity and say on these red lights, people are still running them. In fact, March, we collected the most money we have since they've been up, this past March. So, they don't deter people from running red lights. They don't. I believe that we had a, we have a contract. I think it's an effective contract. I personally attended the, our appeal down there in Delray, and I can tell you, the judge had no appetite to prosecute. He said dismissed, and all future tickets dismissed. I guess where the confusion lies now is that, what do people do who've gotten tickets if they so choose to appeal? Where do they go? That's, I think, the answer that we need to put out there. I think that personally, as a commissioner here in Boynton Beach, I'm off of going cameras dark. I think we give the ATS, I think we give them 45 days. I would like to know, when they come back with us and say the problem, in their opinion, is fixed, who judges that? Do we here as a commission, or does a law, a body of law determine that the situation has been fixed and we can continue with that contract?
Well, the first step is, unless the city commission believes that the fix is a fix, there is no agreement, and the contract would come to an end. But even if the city commission were to agree with ATS that what they are proposing is a fix, that's not likely to deter anybody from challenging the next red light ticket after that.
Right, and as a commissioner, I have no knowledge of the law, so if they were to bring back a fixed contract, I wouldn't know if it was legit or not.
We'll help you through that.
Then I appreciate that. I think my, in my opinion, I think we should shut these cameras, go dark, and give ATS their 45-day notification that we want to terminate their contract.
I agree with that determination. Commissioner Merker?
Yeah, I think we have to do that, so we don't create other issues. But there's one thing, and I'm gonna reiterate over and over again, and it's not being emphasized, and that's the word "safety." Our city attorney mentioned it several times by showing us these pictures. You know, we often, when something happens, we get into denial. No one wants to pay $158. Personally, I had to pay $158 X amount of months ago, and I paid it. But the point is, as you saw in the film, that people make mistakes, not necessarily purposely, but they make mistakes. I think the purpose of running a city is to help people and service people. And the idea of these cameras, yes, they can be fixed, anything is fixed. is fixed. Remember once upon a time when you read about air conditioning? It was created? The air conditioning units then compared to today, they're wonderful. They're better, and they'll get better. The idea that you can protect people in some way, and psychologically, and that's the part two, I disagree with the statement that less people have not been going through red lights. People will always go through red lights, just like people always will do something wrong from the beginning of time in history to way beyond when we're not here. But the idea is that an idea and a fix, a potential fix, is good for the majority of the people is what this red camera is for. No one wants to pay $158. But if we can protect and save lives, I don't care if it's one life, two lives, 10 lives, we've done something wrong. Government is not run like a business where all you do is look at something if it's in the black or in the red. What government is run on is for the helping and the purpose and the servicing of people.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
As a firefighter in Boynton, I've been on several calls where drunks have run red lights. And so, for instance, a Southwest 18th Street in Woolry in Leiserville, one whole bridge table at Leiserville was wiped out. And I, you know, when somebody drives drunk, the first time they drive, when they actually cause an accident, it's not the first time they're driving drunk. It's not the first time they're breaking the law. So to me, the red light cameras do perform an excellent service on attracting attention to these people who are driving drunk earlier on before they actually kill somebody, and hopefully there'll be some intervention. But if it's, you know, if they're getting thrown out for legal technicalities, there's not much we can do to keep it going. So I would agree with the 45-day letter, and let's see if they can fix it. If not, you know, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Yeah.
I'm not so sure all these people that are violating the red light cameras are drunk. I think they're just in a hurry to get someplace.
So that's all.
Yeah, I agree. Before we, I call for any kind of action, I'd like to let the public address. Anybody in the public want to address this? May I do so at this time?
Here I am again. If I'm understanding you correctly, I did...
You need to state your name and address.
Oh, Mary McCarthy, 2016 South Federal Highway, Boynton Beach. I understand that these tickets now are going to be null and void without any other further process. I did write a letter asking for an administrative hearing on my ticket. In the last meeting, you told me to go back to New Jersey and don't worry about it. So I want to know if that still stands, that I can go back to New Jersey and not worry about it.
Well, we're not addressing any tickets that have already been issued. What we're saying is we're going to go dark with the cameras. We will not be issuing from here on, if that's the, if that's the motion here tonight from the commission, we will not be issuing. All right. We're going to shut the cameras off. We won't shut them off. They'll still be operating, but we will not issue any tickets.
Okay. So I'm not in the 200 that just got dismissed. I'm in that limbo portion.
Mm-hmm.
My ticket is supposed to be paid by May the 5th, I believe it is. So...
If you ran the red light, you should pay the ticket.
Well, you know what? I saw those tickets, those red lights that were run, and mine was nowhere near that. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that it didn't happen, but I was the only car there. There was no other car coming. I made a mistake because I even stopped for stop signs in the malls and shopping centers. If I have to pay it, that's one thing. But I also remember hearing somebody asked if they paid the ticket and then they were thrown out. Would they get their money back? And the answer was no.
That's right.
So if going forward, you're turning it off, and tickets have been tossed out, I'm going back to New Jersey, asking for a hearing, taking special circumstances into consideration, that I'm going back to New Jersey. I was told that everything was being put on hold. Nothing was being done.
Well, things are not being put on hold.
Well, that's what your mayor said the last meeting.
What the commission is doing tonight is deciding what to do going forward from today. Okay?
If you got a, if you got a ticket, we have photographic proof that you ran the red light. Now, if you want to fight that, you can, but I would suggest you pay the ticket and let it go. That's up to you to make the decision.
Well, yeah.
Also, when you appeal, you'll have X amount of days. You're not going to court right away. And if you listen to yourself just before, a couple of seconds ago, you're guilty. That's what you said. So the issue is, it's the risk that you want to take, like anything and anything any of us do. If you do something wrong, do you pay or don't pay, or later pay the...
You know what? I understand what you're saying. However, I think that you need to make a decision on the tickets that were in limbo. If you're saying that everybody who had a ticket that was in limbo has to pay, that's one thing. But all of these tickets are getting thrown out of court. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that in the state of Florida, there is a law or a statute, whatever you want to call it, that says a ticket has to be issued by an officer. Doesn't say it has to be reviewed. So we get to the point where what is, is, and what does it really mean?
That's, you can argue that with a judge. I'm not a judge.
So if I get my hearing and I'm not in the state of Florida...
Ask for...
I'm asking you, if you're asking for my opinion, I'm advising you to pay the ticket. I can only give you my opinion. You can work the rest out with a judge.
It's like paying a bill. When do you pay your bill?
I understand that. I just...
Make it simple.
Well, yes, but I just think that with the tickets now, they're shutting them off, and the tickets before, evidently, all of the tickets that went to court were tossed out, and you're leaving people with no recourse. Pay the ticket.
It's not us. Understand, it's not us.
Who is it?
It's the state. It's the county. It's the legal system. It's judicial system. It's the idea that it's being questioned. It's being appealed. It's the idea like any law, any potential law that's created, it goes through stages before it settles in.
Okay. Then I guess I'd like to know why the mayor told me the last time to go back to New Jersey and don't worry about it.
Well, I told you, you asked me, what should I do? I told you, I'm not an attorney. I'm not a judge.
No, you did not say that.
It's your decision.
You can do what you want. I told you, do what you want.
No, you did not. What you told me was go back to New Jersey and don't worry about it.
You can still do that. You can still do that.
Mary, it's your decision.
Well, thank you very much.
It's your decision.
Okay. Back to the commission. Did somebody else want to say, talk?
Good evening, America commissioners. My name is Ali Garcia. I reside at 1631 North Western Lane. I came to you all with an idea a while back. I told you all that I went to the West Coast. In the bottom of the light, it has a blinking light that warns you when the light's going to change. You all didn't want to hear about it. If you want to keep the lights to give tickets, the cameras, whatever, put a blinking light on the bottom of the light that tells you that light's going to change within a certain amount of seconds.
You have a car, you have a yellow light that tells you that?
The blinking light on the bottom of the light is blinking constantly that tells you that light's going to change. Go to the West Coast. They had them out there. I suggested that to you all, and you all didn't want to listen about it.
I've been all over the country. I spent 26 years. I've been over the country. I understand red, yellow, and green. And when the yellow's yellow, tells me the light's getting ready to change.
I understand that too. And I've been all over the country just like you have.
Okay.
But at the same time, you want to keep the cameras. I'm just making a suggestion. Whether you want it or not, it's up to you.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Mr. Barrett, if I was to get a red light ticket tomorrow...
Pay.
And I thought I was justly, didn't go through the red light. I thought I was right. I would appeal it up at the county courthouse and move forward from that if I thought I was innocent.
Mm-hmm.
If I was not guilty. If I thought I was guilty and I was caught on camera, then I would pay. That's how I feel about it. But if I had any doubt, I would appeal it.
Okay. What does the commission want to direct the attorneys to do?
Oh, yes, to move forward.
Do you want to direct that we go black with the cameras and, as I say, to submit the letter to the ATS that we would like to cancel the contract?
I move that we, I move that we do that.
I think that what my recommendation was, that we go dark without cameras, give ATS their 45 days of notice, and if they don't come back with some type of...
Resolution.
And the law department will determine if it's a legitimate fix, and then we terminate the contract.
And also...
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes. The other issue is that we're not discussing tonight is the idea that the definition of a contract. Definition of a contract, very simply, is both sides receive something for the contract. This is not what we're talking about now, but that I'm sure will be part of the discussion in the future with our city attorney and the company.
I have a motion. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So the motion is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor. There's part two to this item as well, and that is when the judge finally does sign a written order, the clock will begin running for us to take an appeal of that in discussions with ATS. ATS has indicated that they would pay all the costs of the appeal. I'm asking for your authorization to take an appeal once the order is signed by the judge.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
Can you say all costs? Does that mean all costs?
That's what they said.
All, A.L.
We'll get that in writing.
We'll get that, get that through.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So the motion unanimous. We have a, we need to set a closed-door meeting for, before the next meeting, is it?
Yes, sir. We need a half an hour on that case.
Okay. Would, is the commission authorized for a closed-door session at 6 o'clock before the next city commission meeting?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So the motion unanimous.
I should have pointed out, if you do it an hour before, you have a library conference room. The library director provides food. I really just mentioned that to thank you for doing that tonight on a closed...
Any other business? Come forward to the commission.
Mr. Barrett, I'd just like to say in closing is that...
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'd just like to say in closing, a real thank you to Parise LeDoux here. She's been filling in for our city manager who had a procedure done and has been out, it's going to be out four, five, six weeks. And I'd like to thank staff for really backing her up and getting all the information we need to make some informed decisions. So the staff, the Parise, to all the leadership out there in our city, thank you so much.
Thank you. Stand to adjourn.